Ooh, silence.
You're a pin drop. All set? Great, thank you, Mike. All right, I'm gonna call the city council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Steve, can you help me with the roll call, please?
Sure. All the person's loga.
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Valdi?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Grimmer?
Here.
Kassen?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
And Mayor Atwell?
Present.
And Administrator Haftner?
Here.
And Attorney Hammett.
Present.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going on to four, public hearing, proposed 2021 city of Delphill budget. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed 2021 city of Delphill budget. Is there anyone here to speak to the public hearing? Mary, come on up. You had the quick hand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel. I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delphill. Tonight, I'd like to offer my comments on something called the 2021 proposed budget workshop. This mammoth piece of paper. So, on page nine, it says, "The debt service payments continue to increase as expected", on and on. "They will continue until 2028. Nearly 50% of the city's 2020 general fund debt service is a result of municipal buildings projects." And this was approved by the city residents by a referendum. And then I would like to go on to something called the five-year capital improvements packet. Under that presentation for 2021, under dams, piers, bridges, and waterways, it has $128,000 for the St. John's Bay Public Boat for Boat Access to Downtown. Under parks, public buildings, and facilities, there's $82,500 to repave the Fish Hatchery Sports Complex parking lot, and $10,000 for the St. John's Park for regrating for relocated ice rink. $20,331 for Veterans Memorial Riverwalk for Plaza entrance to the VMR Bridge and Liberty Park at the Municipal Parking Lot. Under streets and highways, there's Oakwood Drive Separated Path Phase One, which is Genesee to Hillcrest, for $85,000, and Mission Road Path for $112,000. That's where I have a question mark. Oakwood Drive Path Phase One, as of March 2020, at a public works meeting, a signed petition is on file of 12 signatures of people living on Oakwood objecting to the path. To cross from the intersection of Genesee Street over Highway C to get to Oakwood is dangerous, and then two houses later, going west, the path crosses back over to the south side of Oakwood. The path will need to be plowed for snow and ice and maintained. No dollars were attached what it would do to the operating budget. Mission Road Path Maintenance for Snow and Ice Removal, $112,060. I'm not sure about that. And then, under street signs, it says annual replacement, $5,000. It states it has no impact on the operating budget, but it does. It takes people to put the signs in. Under parks, public buildings, and facilities, repaving the Fish Hatchery Sports Complex parking lot, regrading the St. John's Park for relocating the ice rink, and a plaza entrance to the Bridge and Liberty Park. The parking lot is not in that bad a shape, I don't think, and it really doesn't get a lot of use. Regrading the St. John's Park for an ice rink when you have a pond right next to it, hmm. The area on the north side is an outstanding example of native plants, which complements the plantings on the bank on the east side of the pond. And it holds the soil really well. The city spent $10,000 in 2013 to purchase a man-made rink and install it at Oakwood Park. Now another $10,000 for a relocation. Veterans Memorial Riverwalk Plaza. There is no start date for a structure for Liberty Park. When it's built, the paths need to be put in. What and where will the utilities be placed for the structure? And possible additional parking needs to be determined first. Staff costs are indicated, but no dollars attached. St. John's Bay Public Boat Dock for Access to Downtown. I believe citizens who live on the lake in that area have voiced their opinions that they're not in favor of this. The project has nothing noted under impact on operations and states there's a potential for a grant. This is an example, I feel, of no prior proper planning when it comes to what it costs for maintenance and public use. In closing, please, consider pausing these capital improvement projects. We have an operating budget deficit. We have all these amenities that make Delphill what it is. We have to pay for them. Example of the municipal buildings until 2028, and maintain what we have. Nowhere do I see how we're going to maintain the 10,000 plants along the Bark River, now that the maintenance contract, which I believe expires in 2021, or cut over the 1,000 grass plants back every year for the Gulf Road Roundabout each spring. These things impact our operating budget for all city departments directly or indirectly. Whether the referendum passes or not, we must be physically prudent in our planning and not just move a capital improvement project to the next year without reevaluating it each year. I want to thank you, everyone, for what you're doing. Your job is not easy. This budget thing is not late-night reading, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Great, thank you for your comments, Mary. Okay, who would like to be next? Any other citizen, come on up?
George?
Good evening. My name is Mike Hausman. I live at 608 St. John's Drive. I'm calling concerning, I'm here tonight concerning the proposed add-on to the boat dock in the area of St. John's Bay. I've lived here 40 years. I haven't moved once. I've lived on the same spot for 40 years. I cannot possibly imagine what we are putting 200 feet of dock out there and who it's gonna service. I cannot possibly imagine how people are gonna use this to the benefit of the city with city money that's being spent to put this in. The rental of several piers, which was in the, what I read in, I do not understand why people would leave their boat there, renting it unattended, and paying $3,000, I think it was, a year for the rental. I know there have been several letters that were filed that you all received, one from my next-door neighbor Jim Nelson, another one from Scott Betcher, that I thought in detail set forth more of the, more of the things that I'm trying to express, but you have a full calendar tonight. What I'm trying to say is, I don't come here and write often, but the fact of the matter is, I cannot possibly imagine what we're spending 130-plus thousand dollars for to put in something that I don't think will be used. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Come on up, Danielle. Your arm was quick.
My name is Danielle Henry, and I live at 2816 Burry's Road. And I just had a couple of comments. I know that the path has been going in along Nagawicca, and I just want to say, I think it is amazing. I don't know how many people have had a chance to go by it, but even Halloween last night and getting to walk at night with my kids was so freeing to be able to walk out of our neighborhood and feel safe on that road. And I just think it's really amazing that's going in. I am in support of it continuing down Oakwood. I understand the 12 families, or 12 people that are opposed to it, but I think there are hundreds of people that would benefit from it. I live down a dead-end road where nobody goes, and I work where I can see people. I have dozens of people walking by my house every day, so I can't even imagine how many people would benefit from that, from going all the way, being able to walk all the way down to the park and utilizing these amenities that we can't even get to, that my kids can't even get to right now. So I just wanted to say that. And then also, as far as the referendum goes, there's been people who have spoken on behalf of the Delphill residents, and I would just want to say, they don't speak for everyone, and they don't speak for me. I really appreciate what you guys have done, and I've asked a lot of questions, and feel like you guys have been very forthcoming, and I feel like a lot of the concerns that were raised have very reasonable explanations, and with a little bit of curiosity and questioning, it's all explained and it makes sense. I think you guys are doing a really great job, and I hope you will continue to support. I hope the citizens will support the referendum so you guys can continue to do the work you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Susie, you were the next, quick arm.
Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. A lot of what we're talking about tonight is reference health and safety, and being a wonderful neighborhood here in Delphill. I think it's nice that somebody would come up and talk about the path. That was really sweet to hear a positive comment. I've been by, and I'm really impressed with it. I know it was very controversial. Several things that Mary Daniel brought up, I think, were very well stated. She put a lot in there in a short amount of time, and it was very helpful to have been noted. One thing I have made myself personally very clear on, adding a public pier does not make sense to me financially, usability, it doesn't seem good for the lake. Reading what I have in our Realtors 2019-2020 Continuing Education Reference Lakes, I don't think that what I read from the DNR and what we're taught as Realtors, that we're required to know as Realtors, everybody on the board is aware of. I'd be happy to send you a link, but our continuing ed is not publicly available. There is a 54-minute link about water and what's allowed with lakes. First of all, I don't think the size of it is allowed in that area. It's too close to the dam. The depth of the water there does not allow for even pontoons and that many pontoons to be there safely. What Mike had brought up about leaving personal property and having it unattended, I don't know if any of you have tried walking down to where you would access that, but to see the public walking down in a very, what I call, a blind alley that leads to where we would put the pier is too, too much drawing people into an area that is not easily pleased by our police department, or the neighborhood, or the public going down there. So I don't know who's gonna protect the boats that would be there, even if you drove your own personal boat down there to come and use the city restaurants. I know the restaurants have asked, would love anything that brings more business to them, but I don't know having 13 to 16 to 20 extra boats there on and off, I don't know that's gonna bring a large amount of business, because the boats that come in are only gonna be there a small amount of time. I don't see the return on the money, so it doesn't make sense to me. A lot of other things that we're doing, I think we need to be aware of how they impact the lake. The fact that the Lake Welfare Committee has talked about doing rain gardens, we're talking about trying to enhance and protect the lake. I don't think we should do anything that puts it in danger or the depth of the water. Putting an ice rink where there is currently some wonderful flowers that have grown, if we want to add that on the budget another year, I think we should dig up some of those plants instead of just cutting them off if we're gonna kill them, or I don't know if we want to just cut them down to the ground and put the ice rink there, but I don't know why we would put it there when we could put it on top of the ball dimer. It'd be quicker and easier accessible than to put it there. I don't think people using the ice rink are going to go to a restaurant before or after being out on the ice, so saying that it's bringing people to downtown, I don't think that's viable either. Anyway, most of what's in the budget is really good. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other citizens who would like to speak to the public hearing? Come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Brian Zahorek, 1942 West Shore Drive. This was brought to my attention a few hours ago about the pier that is being proposed to be put in, and I'm a resident. I live on Nagawicca. Most mornings in the summer, I paddleboard into town and go get a coffee. On a paddleboard, it's barely navigable with the weeds and the silt. Where it's gonna be located, I don't see that, again, I see it as being a danger, and just not to echo everything that was just stated, but I don't see it as a, as a good expenditure at this point, especially with the optics of, as we're talking about, trying to get this referendum passed to keep the safety and security that we currently have, not increasing it, but just simply keeping what we currently have, and then at the same time adding, or, you know, taking money from the, from the tax base to pay for something that, again, it's, the proposed location and the cost of it does not look good to me, to my wife, and to most of the people that I've talked to in the short time that we've, that I've become aware of it. So, in short, I'm opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Any other citizens like to speak? Come on up, Jim.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening. Jim Zahorek, 1948 West Shore Drive. I do not normally read anything in front of you folks, but this one I have to. This is a letter from Jim and Mary Nelson. I think it's extremely succinct, it's short. "To the Delphill Common Council, we have lived adjacent to St. John's Bay for over 30 years and have several valid concerns regarding the proposed pier project on St. John's Bay. Our property directly borders Church Street, and the negative impacts of this project are numerous. Several of our neighbors have already effectively voiced their issues in great detail of the harmful effects of this project, which we agree with and will summarize why we are in complete opposition to the project. The welfare of the bay is an issue, as the water depth is very shallow with murky water most of the time and difficult to navigate. We observe many kayakers and fishermen enjoying and/or launching from the bay area, although sadly have heard many people report decreased to nonexistent numbers of fish in the waters compared to just a few years ago. We imagine adding an additional 13 pontoon boats plus an unspecified number of personal watercraft vehicles will further destroy the natural lake habitat for wildlife of all types. The strip of land between the lake and pond has been developed naturally and is enjoyed by many non-lake residents. Many people have a chance to enjoy a view of the lake, picnic, watch fireworks, hike, or use the fishing pier, thus enhancing non-lake residents' appreciation of the lake. The proposed pier project would extend so far out into the bay that most of the view from this land would be of pontoon boats and personal watercraft vehicles, thus taking away this chance to enjoy the serenity of the area. The problems associated with the pier project include traffic, congestion, parking, lighting, toilet facilities, garbage, noise, security, and safety. All these would directly impact those of us living near or adjacent to the project, and there doesn't seem to be a comprehensive plan to address any of these issues. The cost of building a pier, annual maintenance, and insurance is also concerning at a time where city residents are being asked to vote yes on a referendum or else lose important services, decrease police, and city administration positions. There must be a wiser way to spend our tax dollars than this pier project, which will only have six slips available for access of non-lake residents. Putting in a pier project of this magnitude for the convenience of a few lake residents to shop or go out to the bars does not appear to be in the best interest of the welfare of the lake environment or those living closest. Sincerely, Jim and Mary Nelson." I could not agree more with that letter, and the impact that it will have on that area of our lake. Like my son, I enjoy going into St. John's Bay. I do it on what's called a pedalboard, not a paddleboard. And underneath that pedalboard are two fins that propel the apparatus. It is extremely difficult to operate as you get close to the fishing pier, within, say, 200 to 300 yards of it. And to put, we know we can't dredge there. I've had a number of discussions with Heidi Bunk, the water quality specialist, and she's claiming that that's a, it'll affect the fishery. And we know, over the years, that the silt buildup and weed growth has gotten to a point where many people on the north side of St. John's Bay have to use a pole to push their boats out into the center part of it, because it's not navigable, and they can't be dredged. So why would we put a pier there? Number one, you're gonna jeopardize any outboard or inboard motor that operates in those extremely shallow waters. So, enough on that issue. The other thing is, we talk about, we want this referendum to pass, and I hope anybody watching at home who hasn't voted to please get out and vote. We need this referendum to pass. But in the unlikely event that it doesn't, a number of the projects that all are in that budget, and they're put in there by well-meaning people looking to make this a better community to live in, we have to weigh it against what we're going to give up. And what we're giving up, and I spoke of it two weeks ago, is a police officer, a public works employee, and a member of our office staff if it does not pass. And we, I, in my limited exposure to this, cannot justify it. I cannot see compromising safety at this point in our lives, our lives, and put in those, shall we, and they're not niceties. The pier, I'm sure, was well, was thought out that will help the downtown community, and the businesses would like that. We all want to have the businesses succeed, but I can't, I can't accept that. In closing, as was stated before, all of you do a fantastic job. I've only, always been on this side of the fence, and I am thrilled to be in a community where we have this much involvement, this much concern for the public good, and I'd like to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else to the public hearing?
I have one from a constituent that wanted me to read that off.
Okay.
So, we have it up here, but Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I'm running tonight in strong opposition to the inclusion of the capital project entitled St. John's Bay. Public Boat Dock for Boat Access to Downtown. As a member of mine told me years ago, and as closely fits this proposal, jumping over dollars to pick up nickels and dimes. According to numbers provided by staff between 2012 and 2016, the city underwent levy, excuse me, underleveed by greater than $366,000. Additionally, had the levy been at a level to qualify, the city could have garnered additional significant dollars under the expenditure restraint program. The city chose to do neither. As the city purposefully chose not to generate significant additional revenue without the insurance of debt, excuse me, issuance of debt, it astonishes me that the city would even consider issuing additional debt for an alleged breakeven of seven years and a fully supported maximum revenue stream of only $18,000 per year. No pro forma has been produced by the city. This proposal is truly jumping over dollars to pick up nickels and cents. The presentation in the budget packet for this item lacks supporting documentation. There is a document which purports to state key facts, details, and support, yet it is unsigned and has few details and contains no support. This document is a recitation of unsupported and/or unvalidated opinions made by an unknown author. Let me review. First, there's an assertion that the St. John's has no reparian rights, yet there is no indication that this is accurate. Neither the city attorney nor representatives of St. John's validated such an assertion, nor has any title search been done to authenticate upon what basis the city has title to the property in question. Secondly, there is no traffic or parking analysis. There appears to be an assumption that people will take their boats to St. John's Bay then walk downtown. I would argue the opposite will happen. People will drive to downtown, try to park, and take their boats out on the lake. Either scenario will exacerbate an already growing traffic and parking issue downtown, particularly near the three to four spaces closest to the site. Thirdly, this type of activity does not appear to be permitted use on this property pursuant to our zoning code. It also does not appear to be an accessory use. Given these two assumptions, considering such a use through a conditional use process would be arduous and potentially litigious. Fourth, one of the Lake Welfare Commissioners mentioned that she represented a non-lake district, and she stated that people there were against it, as they thought it was for the lake people. I replied that no one on the lake was for it, as they were already on the lake. Primarily, the issue is this: No one, and I mean no one, has ever stated to me in my time, now, as a resident, or my years as the city administrator in Delphill, gee Scott, let's do something to increase traffic and impact on the lake, especially at St. John's Bay, which is treated a little bit differently by already, and let's go into debt to do it and exacerbate a parking and traffic issue. It goes without saying that there is a strong opposition to this proposal, and it's growing. Fifthly, the Lake Welfare Committee declined to endorse this proposal- Fifthly, the Lake Welfare Committee declined to endorse this proposal at their October meeting. It will be reconsidered, but if it was to be supported, given their pursuant, excuse me, given their previous endorsement, they would have done so quickly. And sixth, it would have shown good governance had the city held a public information meetings with those directly impacted by the proposal. Conversely, it shows poor governance to propose such a project without any direct contact with those most impacted. The city's lack of transparency has certainly increased the probability of litigation. Seventh, there is nothing in the packet from the DNR. I wholeheartedly request that the council remove this project from the proposed financial year of 2021 capital budget. Sincerely, Scott Butcher, 704 St. John's Drive.
All right. Any other comments? Any other comments to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, now we're going to move on to item five, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments for anything on or off the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Suzie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. I have not moved in the last ten minutes since I spoke. On the agenda tonight, we have several things that come up again about health and safety and values of our properties. One thing I don't think that any of us have any choices anymore to even discuss or talk about, but we'll, we'll get more information tonight, is on the Sportsman's Club. And I know everybody who is not here, and I know several people who are watching tonight are anxious to hear the outcome, and at this point, we need to move forward in the, in safest possible manner, and we all know that. But thank you to Jim for being here as our city attorney and help us through all of this, all of you, on, on the council as well. This has been a difficult time. At the end of the meeting tonight, we're going to hear from Weissgubbers. I think it's very sad, and all of us are very sad, that, that they're going to be closing. The property being for sale and what is the best potential use for it is something that will be brought up tonight. I've spoken to quite a few people about the dividing of the property, and making it into three lots does seem the wisest and best use, least impact on the lake, contrary to other things that we've talked about tonight. And the best impact on the neighborhood would be residential. Flip side of that, if, I've been calling investors in three different states to see if I could find somebody who'd be interested in operating it again as a restaurant. And as a realtor, I've continued to pursue that idea as well. But in all fairness to anybody owning property on the lake, what was proposed a week ago was a very beautifully thought-out and well-presented option of making this into three residential lots. I think the people in the neighborhood and on the lake very much support it, and it does seem to be the wisest possible improvement. So I hope that the council will consider that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now...
I think there's one, Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. Come on up, please.
Hello, I'm Angie Phillips. I'm at 917 Broken Boat Court, and I am here tonight that, to ask your request if you decide that the Gun Club is ready to move on and we are feeling comfortable with the safety measures that they are going to put forth. I'd like you to consider the times that they would like to operate that are on page nine of tonight's agenda, and please consider limiting those hours to 8:00 PM as opposed to 9:00 PM. We have young people that live in our subdivision very close to the Gun Club, and as a mother of some former little people, that was really difficult to get them to sleep. So I would request that if you decide that that is, is going to be safe as we move forward, that you limit those hours to 8:00 PM Tuesday and Thursday, that they're requesting nine. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for the comments. Okay, anybody else for citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, so now we're going to go into matters for possible closed session. So just so you, everybody else that's, let's see here.
Ken.
Yep, I got it, I got it. Actually, I'm going to have Kelly Yost come up from Park, Rack, Park and Rack, and I'm going to have, she is item...
Eight B, eight B two A.
Thank you. Eight B, so we can get her out of here before we go into closed session. So Kelly, can you just, Tom, you want to give us an overview of why Kelly's here, and then we'll have Kelly make a statement, and then we'll have the council chime in.
Yeah, just real briefly, the city's had a longstanding agreement with Heartland to provide recreation services. In the past, we've paid Heartland a fixed fee, it's been $2,000 most recently, and then in addition to that, we've paid the actual cost for printing and mailing of program guides three times a year for the different programs that go out. This was discussed earlier this year with the council, and the direction provided was to work out a deal where we can significantly reduce those costs, and what we've done is we've completely eliminated the, the mailing of the programs. We will print out a limited number of programs that'll be available at City Hall and the library. And in addition to that, after five years, an existing contract with the fixed $2,000 amount, the Village of Heartland is asking for the fixed amount to be increased to $2,500. So the actual impact in 2019, we spent just over $6,000 between the fixed fee, the printing, and the mailing, and the proposed budget for next year includes about $27,000 or $28,000 in it, which is the $2,500, excuse me. The fixed fee will stay at $2,000 next year, won't go up to $2,500 until 2022. So starting in 2022, the anticipated cost would be the $2,500 fixed fee, and then probably about $200 or $300 for the printing of the limited number of guides.
So in essence, we're going to be spending a whole lot less money.
Correct.
Additionally, Park and Rec is dedicated and working to find ways to, to advertise and get the word out on, on this great, you know, partnership that kind of goes beyond mailing flyers out to every citizen in Delafield three times a year, you know. So we're going to create a subcommittee to investigate that and develop a plan.
Kelly, did you have anything to add to that?
No, you guys pretty much covered everything. I was going to pretty much say all that, and just see if you guys have any questions in regards to the agreement. It was nice to talk to Park and Rec Commission, get their feelings on stuff, see their support, which I greatly appreciate it. And again, like I've always told you guys, it's always been a pleasure to work with the City of Delafield staff, they've been supportive, helpful, and I hope to see this relationship to continue. I know my instructors and the students as well feel the same.
And, and Kelly's been great enough to provide some numbers, not from 2020, because those are not valid.
Yeah, 2020's gonna, everybody, 2020's...
2019 numbers to see the utilization of the program, so we can monitor utilization, and then we can see what's working. Well, how is our, you know, advertising plan working? Or is it failing? Do we need to go back to something else? But the goal is to, is to bring that into the modern age and find some efficiencies with that advertising. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the Heartland-Park and Rec relationship with Delafield in the amount of $2,000 for 2021 and $2,500 for the years 2022 through 2026.
I'll second.
The other thing I'd like to mention is, although this may seem as an increase, a big increase of 25% year-over-year, it's actually not. The, the relationship has been that we've, that we've moved that dollar up. The last time it was $1,500 back in 2013, 2009?
And then it went up to 2,000 when we redid it, but it was 1,500 then 2,000, so 500 is our norm of going up for, after a few years.
Right, so we're looking at five-year increments.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Thank you, Kelly.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Off to your next meeting. Okay. Now, I think we've only got two other applicants here, so rather than have you sit through the closed session, which might be an hour or so, I'm going to try to pull them up. Are you okay with that there, Mr. Iker, there on the plant commission?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's have the Chugums come up first. So let's see, what item number is that, Tom? Is that eight B?
Eight A.
A, B?
Eight A two A, B, and C.
B.
Oh. B, C, and D?
So eight A two, and then A, B, and C.
A, B, and C, okay.
So, yeah, A two.
Changes.
I'm sorry, B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
B, C.
Okay, Tom, can you give us an overview on B?
Yeah, as you recall, the, this issue's been before the council in the past. What we're trying to do is provide access to two landlocked properties that were previously really undevelopable, and as part of that deal, we have negotiated with the prospective buyers where they would provide us an easement through their driveway area in exchange for the city providing a small sliver of land off of Sunset View that's, it's really unused at the current time. And so before you, item B is the CSM to make that happen. Item C is the easement agreement, which provides access for, for the public in the future. And item D is the quitclaim deed that you would be authorizing the execution of to transfer some of Sunset View Drive to these properties. Any questions on that?
I can add that this is, it's probably been a year in the making, right? It's somewhere in there.
Yeah, around a month, like 10 or 11, I saw.
Okay. This is not a, it's not an easy, straightforward situation because there's two things here that the plant commission isn't really, well, is never a really big fan of. One, we're creating flag lots. The other one is we were giving, we're also granting an exception to the five-acre lot requirement for septic. So these are smaller than five acres and they're not connecting the sewer. So those are two things that are, those are pretty substantial hurdles in, in most situations. But where this comes into play is that this was a, this was at one point a road, right, Tom, that the city owned that was going to give access to these lots in a different fashion, and it's just something that the city, or was going to be the city, anyway.
The city never accepted dedication of them because of the steepness of it.
So the, so the plans that are some, that are decades old to develop these lots was never realized, and the property owner was just looking at, for a creative way to, to turn them into the lots that they were destined to be anyways. And one of the wins the city gets in the neighboring neighborhoods is a walking path easement through the property so that they can walk over the hill and continue their hiking, get down the hill to target area and stuff, stuff like that. So it's, it's a very, very unique situation that is, I can't imagine it could even be repeated in the city because of just the geography and the certain, special circumstances. But I believe this was unanimously approved by the plant commission when all the details came through.
I might add, this is before Jim Baron, but I used to say, why are those roads there? It was, I think, errors made at developer-platted things that get platted, and the city doesn't wish to build roads on steep slopes, and there's a standard there. So I think it's a creative solution to get to the lots.
Yeah.
There are lots of record before we put in the ordinance on the five acres. We were really trying to just avoid septic tank subdivisions, and yet you still got one. And I'm not picking on it.
What's critical here is these two lots would continue to be undeveloped for the foreseeable future. So coming up with this solution is really a win for everybody. And thank you for doing all the hard work that you've done. You've done your fair share, my friend.
I want to make one point. Whether it's a path or not, it's really important that we get these connections where people can migrate through, and so you and the subsequent owners, please know that the public's going to have some access there. And I believe it as a positive for everyone, but that's one of the things that's traded in here, that, you know, for us to do these exceptions. So please be aware of it. What bothers me is it gets forgotten, and then all of a sudden, someone's walking there. So that's what I like about it.
I don't think Jeff's going to forget any of it. All the discussions.
A lot of blood, sweat, and tears in this one.
But I, you know, I do agree with getting these lots safe access to a public.
That'll be the last thing I remember when I look at it. All the legal hours associated with the language related to the easement, I'm concerned I should forget it.
Okay.
The stories will go on for a long time after me.
All right, well, I'll make a motion on A two B to approve the certified survey map to create these three new lots.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And likewise, I'll make a motion to approve the associated public access and driveway easement agreement.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, did you say you'd second that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to execute a quitclaim deed between the City of Delafield and Tennessee Fertivare Survivor Trust transferring Sunset View Drive, a portion of it.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Easiest thing you've done so far, right?
Start, start digging.
Okay, I'm going to now jump to eight A two E. Special exception for the division of a lot into three single-family lots that do not comply with the lot width requirements as measured at the shore setback. The property subject to the request included D E L C 0782 dot 001 dot 001, 1807 Nagawick Road, Delafield owner, Meradia LLC, care of Tina and Ramona Weissguber. Come on up, ladies. Okay, Tim, you got this one?
Yep. Welcome, and again, I echo the sadness that the business is, you're doing what you, doing what you have to do, and unfortunately, that may, may mean saying goodbye to Seven Seas, so it's, that's sad, but, so the applicant approached the plant commission with a plan and option to develop the property into three residential lots as opposed to what it is. And it's, it's a little bit over 280 feet of frontage. And this, timing's everything. The special exception that was actually being worked through with the, with the plant commission as far as an update, currently, the, the plant commission can, can grant a special exception to create a lot of any, of any width on the lake. And we were really looking at tightening that down and saying, we're going to limit it to the creation of a 100-foot width lot if there was any way that someone were on it. There's not a lot of lots that you could do this to. That if you were to create an exception other than 150 feet, which is in our statute, that the exception could not be any narrower than the underlying zoning, which on our RL1 is 100 feet. And so what they end up with here, dividing us into three lots, is being about 16 feet short. So that special exception rule is just something that we're, we're working through, and it's not actually in place right now. But the purpose of that would be because we're really concerned about, and all, and a lot about zoning is the minimizing the impact to surrounding neighborhoods about their enjoyment of the property, like, and typically, that's, that's upset on lakes or in residential areas when you dramatically increase density or the intensity of the use of the property. And it was not really any, in any of our minds that someone would be looking to go below 100 feet of frontage by doing exactly the opposite. When you take a restaurant, a busy restaurant and, you know, a banquet facility like they have, and you... have, and you turn that into three houses, you're dramatically decreasing the amount of use of the property and the intensity and the, and the density. And so we see this more like the, the zoning is working, their proposal works in favor of being in harmony with the neighbors. Because their neighboring lots are 66 feet, 104 feet, 70 feet, all up and down the shore from them. And what they're proposing is two lots on the outside of the property, on the edges of 100 feet or slightly greater and one that's in the, in the 80s, I believe, in the middle. So with a lot of deliberation, the, the Plant Commission, you know, understood what they're trying to do. We're also, they're also spending a lot of money to get rid of a huge parking lot, which is a lot of impervious surface there. And so we see this general being something that would be negative for the recreation and just the nightlife on the lake right there, but a positive as far as the environment in the neighborhood. So, so we, we voted in favor of recommending this to the council to approve these, this special exception.
Unanimously.
It was unanimous, yes.
Is there a motion?
I, I will make a motion to, and actually I sat back and let other people make that recommendation because I'd be here, because this is, this is unusual. So I'll make the, I'll make the motion here to grant the special exception for the division of the Weiskirber family, or the restaurant lot into three single-family lots for 1807 Nagawicca Road.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so it stated that the applicant was interested in dividing into two lots, which would have been conforming. And it really doesn't state the special exemption to move to three versus a two. So what, what, like hardship or what kind of special exemption moving to three lots versus two, which would have been conforming?
Two lots is not conforming. Two lots is currently, to create a new lot on the lake, it has to be 150 feet wide. So they were looking for a special exception to that rule already. And they just simply presented the consistency and actually of, of the, of the lots along the lake to the north and to the south of them. And also a legacy, just the, the simple legacy that 60, 70, 80 years ago, there were actually four or five lots on that property that were about 50 feet wide. That's since changed, but, so no, they did not, they did not appeal in the form of a hardship to us. They were just, they simply stated the reality that the sheer economics made three clearly a lot more attractive without being disruptive to the harmony of the adjacent lots.
I'll add to that, and Susie Thompson alluded to it a little bit. I think this is an opportunity for the neighborhood. It's not an opportunity for the people who live on the lake because we like going there.
Yeah, for sure.
But it's an opportunity for the people who live on the neighborhood to have quiet enjoyment because the noise, you know, impacts them. If we make it two, we might still have a restaurant. And so I do, I hate to say that we're, we, we really wanna have this happen. And so they present something to us and we know that it fits the fabric of the neighborhood. This would have existed as three lots had it happened 30 years ago or 60 years ago. But I think we need to lay on the table enough. So it clearly moves on because that's what we're, that's what we're accepting. We're accepting their offer.
But we're not make, we're making this decision based not on hardship. We don't make those considerations. We don't make it based on history. We make it based, we're making an exception from what you said the Plant Commission said that this is a net benefit to the, to the residents surrounding that area because it's a decrease in, in density and...
Use impact.
Use impact, yes.
Effective density is, it's a huge decrease. And secondly, it, it environmentally, this is one of the better pickups for the lake.
It's massive, I want to thank you. I was gonna jump on that.
We gotta take this deal.
Yeah, and I can get behind that for the latter reasons, not the former.
No, and, and no, but I think they're just the loss of, I mean, I'm gonna, I love the sunsets. It sounds like so sad. But to think about removing impervious pavers there, right, where it's gonna filter down, it's just, it's gonna be such a plus for the lake. And so, I mean, if we have to give up something that's a cultural icon for the Lake Nagawicca, then let's give something back to the lake. And that's what we can do with this.
And I agree, I, I don't, I mean, I think the best use is, is this use. I think my point is one of precedence. You know, we just had, what, two or three meetings ago, a landlord in that area? And there's about six or eight homes to the south that are 150 feet wide, okay? There's, there's several very large ones. And they, they submitted a plan to change their lot lines a little bit and they had to go by the conforming new rules of the 150 feet. And, you know, if, if, if they didn't have any type of restriction like this necessarily one, they could have changed that. Furthermore is that if someone else wanted to take 160-foot or 170-foot wide lot and it conformed to some of this stuff, but then conformed to the 100 and 150 feet per lot, what is the reason they couldn't do it? They could, right? I mean, so what's the point of having the, the zone in place? I, I think it should be considered of, you know, what, what the, what the Plant Commission is considering from a zone perspective, put that in place first and then abide to it. But...
Yeah, the, so the discussion, so that is something that we actually discussed with the, with the city planner, is the language that could put, that could be put into this amendment that we're volleying around. And that is to have a heavy weight of consideration for these special exceptions, not necessarily be so tied to a, to a width as it is a density and intensity of use restriction. I mean, it is clear that, that this is a lessening of the intensity of the use of the property and environmentally positive as far as the watershed and that into the lake. Somebody who has currently a, maybe a cottage or a, you know, 3,000 square foot home on 160 feet of frontage that wants to split that into two homes would be driving the, the opposite direction and increasing density and intensity and having two piers instead of one pier and having two driveways and two garages. So, so it's, it's really in keeping with the spirit of the entire intent of the ordinances that we have for zoning is to minimize the impact on the lake. So, so yeah, precedent is important. And so, so it's, you're typically with, with such a proposal without the, the existence of such a use as like the restaurant, you are walking straight into a closed door pretty much when you come to the Plant Commission saying, I wanna, I wanna chop this lot up.
If your intensity use is increasing, not decreasing, that's the opposite here, right? That's the critical difference. The density use is decreasing.
So it's, it's...
Almost every other scenario is that, it's hard to imagine one that would be similar to this.
It's important to have this discussion and put it in the record.
Correct. I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, right, in the recommendation, it says applicant had previously discussed dividing the property into two single-family lots. So two single-family is less dense than three. I mean, if you're arguing about density, but, and then, and then there wasn't really any solid reason why in with the three. It just says however, the current proposal would create three lots. It talked about all the benefit of moving to two lots. And then it just said however, the current proposal is three.
Yeah, well, the argument then is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the property is more saleable as a three.
Well, that's true, but it also is characteristic of the surrounding area, right? Obviously, they probably would make more money selling three lots than they would two, I presume. But it's also in character with the surrounding lots to the north and to the south.
If you, if you read the, when they say discussions or proposals with two lots versus three, those discussions, I believe, were at the city staff, the city planner, correct? Because there was no, there was no presentation to the Plant Commission other than what we came, what we had last week. So the presentation to us was the request for three lots. And so that's the discussion we had. It was, trust me, it's, it's, on, on the surface, it's, it's a hard no all the time when that thing, when that such a proposal comes. With the circumstances that are extremely unique, there's not another seven Cs to chop up. You know, something that we also brought up, for what it's worth, that we're gonna be talking about, is, is the possibility that somebody may at some point wanna take a, a group of aging condos and say, I wanna put a big estate here and knock down eight units and put up two single-family homes. And therefore, that could be a similar scenario in the future where, again, it'd be going that same lack of, you know, lower density area. It's, it's a possibility.
We had a situation with the Lighthouse Bar, which was on Milwaukee Street, kitty-corner from Fishballs. And that was a very intense use in that neighborhood. And a member or two of the lake bought the bar and needed to make it into two condos just to make it work. Well, that little spot of land, under all our rules, but they got all the neighbors to sign the petition through this council and we approved it. And it was, it, it was a similar situation where we use, in that case, business zoning to change so they could put those condos in there. But again, that was a way, was the only way to make that deal work, or it was gonna go back to a bar. And it had, they could put 105 boats in there. And it changed completely the use of the lake. I mean, from all the people on the lake. And so it, it was a similar situation about 30 years ago. And there, there was, it was a huge exception. It's in the record.
And we would just like to bring that to, you know, to the forefront as well, that we are currently, you know, business use in a residential zone. We are going back to residential use in a residential zone. And if it helps, we do have 20 signatures from the immediate neighbors directly on Nagawicca Road, as well as some of the other lake neighbors that are supporting.
That does help.
That does help, yes, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Well, I will make a motion. We don't think we have one yet.
Oh.
I'll make a motion for...
I thought you did make it and I seconded it.
Yes.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstent, excuse me, abstentions passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Good luck.
And then I guess we'll get back to...
Yeah, we'll get back to the planning if you don't mind, Tim. Okay, so now we're back to the first page of the agenda, item six. Manners of possible closed session, 6A, discussion of possible action regarding condition use permit for the Heartland Sportsman's Club located at 701 Maple Avenue, Delafield, DELC 0825.994. Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second it. Can you help us out with the roll call vote, please? Sure, I'll person Saloga. Aye. Barron?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Cassin?
Aye.
And Iker?
Aye.
That's seven yeses. Great, thank you. Okay, folks, so we're gonna go into closed session. We're gonna ask everyone to leave and we're gonna have a discussion with the attorney and then we'll have the gun club come in when we notify you to come in. And then, once we're done with the closed session and with the gun club, then we will reconvene into normal session and continue the rest of the items on the agenda. Okay, thank you, Mike. Welcome back. We have, we're out of closed session, back into open session. And we will return to 6A, discussion of possible action regarding a condition use permit for the Heartland Sportsman's Club located at 701 Maple Avenue, Delafield, DELC 0825.994.
I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone this item to a future meeting that probably will be next Monday.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of October 19, 2020, regular meeting?
I'll so move.
There's two items.
I'll so move.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions passes, and then we'll do 7B, approval of the...
I don't think we had a second, did we? Oh, okay.
Was your motion for both, the whole thing, Tim?
Yes, I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we will move on to 8A.
2A.
Did we do one? That's the report, so...
You did not do it.
Okay, so my report is that I wanna get to item two.
Okay. A2, discussion of possible action on the following items, I believe we're on A.
Yes, so ordinance number 772. What this is, it's kinda housecleaning. Our city planner noted that there's properties that are, there's zoning that's, that's currently B4 and all the surrounding properties are M1. And we just cleaned them up so that they're, all the adjacent properties are the same zoning. So it's a recommendation to us is to change the zoning of these properties as listed on Kettle Court East from B4 to M1. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes?
That is it for the Plant Commission.
Great, so now we are going to...
Park and Rec.
A2B, Park and Rec.
Park and Rec had a meeting last week. We did already address the action item tonight. Two other things that Park and Rec did discuss, the five-year plan is still working on it. There are, we did allocate money to repair the laminated VMR signs. And there was discussion on the ice rink. It was the consensus of Park and Rec, not the unanimous consensus, but the consensus, the general consensus, to attempt to move, to, to investigate putting the ice rink on top of the pond. There was an acknowledgement that DPW put a truck in the pond. There was an acknowledgement that someone fell through the pond. But there is a reluctance to put the ice rink on the, on top of the wildflowers at Genesee St. John's Park. So that is what Park and Rec is looking at. Other than that, no other, I'd refer you to the minutes.
Is that possible to put it on the pond?
That's what they wanna know. They wanna know if we can identify where the natural spring is, mark it off, and then place the rink on top of the pond. So you would have pond, plastic and another few inches of ice. And then designate areas where there will be no skating because of thin ice. I know there's a sign there already, but just identifying it that way. And so with that, the discussion ensued with this, increase our liability, decrease our liability, the, you know, there was a discussion that, well, the liability as it exists now, it couldn't be any worse. So that's kinda where it is.
Okay. And did they say who's leading up that investigation?
They did not identify who is leading up that investigation, but I, per my recollection, I think it's gonna be Tim Ternak because he was most passionate about putting the rink, utilizing the pond for skating.
Okay. All right, great, thank you for the report.
Yep.
Okay, see, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, you're up again.
The Fire Board leadership continues to work on integrating our new members, patient care computers, collaborating, updating maps, call tones, all for, all for January 1. And that is going well. We have no one in quarantine, we have no one in isolation, no Lake Country employees, which is good. So they're still out there doing great work. And our finances are looking very good through September. We've got about 90% of paramedic intercept, or we've got about 90% of ambulance revenue through September of our budgeted, where we should be at 75%. Expenses are slightly higher, but that's because we've been so busy. So things are looking in the black, at least for now.
Great.
Other than that, I refer you to the minutes.
Sounds great, thank you. And you're up yet again for Tree Board.
Tree Board, we allocated $1,200 to tree plantings along the Bark River in front of Blue Collar Coffee where the ugly dumpster sits. And so hopefully those, those trees will shield that dumpster. I also talked to some representatives from Hendrix and they were willing to allow a screening in front of those dumpsters as well to improve the, the ambience, the pleasantness of that restoration.
Great, because after the restoration of the river, that area became kinda prominent where it was more or less hidden in the past.
Yes, and Blue Collar moved their dumpsters from behind... Yes, and Blue Collar moved their dumpsters from behind the building where they built a deck to the, more of the front, not the front, but the side.
Right. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item E, deer management committee did have a meeting in October 21st. I'd say the two highlights were that one of the tree stands that was not in operation was moved over to the Delahart property with investigation of locating it in that location where it could potentially be used. So the physical move was made a couple of weekends ago. And then also, most of the hours on our website for reserving the spots that are available have been booked through most of the time available, not sold out, but booked, I believe, around 75, 80% of the available hours. So we're seeing good usage. We're still trying to, still struggling a little bit with the tracking of the deer as of that meeting. We had records of one deer being taken, but there was a understanding that more follow-up was going to be, needed to be done to make sure we were tracking the actual number of deer that were taken. Other than that, if there aren't any questions, I would refer you to the minutes. Okay, item number nine, mayor's report, no report. Item number 10, new business. A, 2021 common council meeting calendar.
I have a question about the calendar, just looking at it. I know I brought this up last year with the fact that we have, now this will be at least the second, maybe third year, that we don't have a meeting, or two meetings a month, which I understand why. But I'm just wondering, in our code, it says that common council meets the first and third Mondays, but we don't. So do we want, do we need to make that official, or are we still experimenting, or do we need to make some distinguishing language therein?
We actually adopted an ordinance last year changing the code. I don't know if that's not been updated yet online yet.
Well, in the something I was looking at, it still says the first and third. It might have even been in the budget book. There are a couple of things where it says a first and third, so it just occurred to me that...
All right, I think we changed the code. So if you see other places where it says first and third, let us know and we can...
I don't have it in front of me. It just occurred to me, so I'll send it to you. Yeah, I did see it.
So I'll make a motion to publish the calendar.
Y'all second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, 10B, vouchers payable reporting for reporting dates of 10/20/2020 through 10/13/2020 in the amount of $116,000 and change for accounts payable at $71,000 and some change for payroll.
Move to approve the voucher.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, 10C, council discussion on proposed 2021 city Delafield budget.
This item is included on the agenda every year, the night of the public hearing, in case the council wanted to discuss the budget and/or any comments made by the public at the public hearing tonight.
I appreciated all the comments.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, we do, do some heavy lifting in the meeting next week, or in two weeks when we go through to approve it. So, I mean, it's going to receive proper scrutiny.
And we have a big decision that we'll be aware of, hopefully, well, we'll be aware of tomorrow night. So that'll certainly have an effect as well. All right, 11, reports of city officials, administrator.
Yeah, the only report I have is the update on the Nagawicca Road Bike Path Project. The project is proceeding as planned. The path is fully graded, and the contractor intends to pave the southern half of the project tomorrow. That would be from Oakwood to Zastro. And then as far as the remainder of the path, they're still waiting on We Energies to move a couple of power poles before they'll be able to pave that section. That's all I have for report this evening.
Sounds good. I'll just comment on the path. A citizen made a comment on it, but there were quite a few trick-or-treaters using the path that is nothing more than graded TB over the Halloween trick-or-treat festivities. So it's not even finished and it's already being used, so... Okay, 11B, clerk.
I don't want to take a lot of time. We have an election tomorrow. I don't know if you're aware of that, presidential election. As of today, we had 3,680 total absentee ballots. I've sent you guys a couple of updates over the last couple of weeks so you can at least see the genesis of how many absentee ballots we've been getting. We did have over 1,500 in-person absentee voters the last two weeks. So we're currently at 63.1% turnout.
Wow.
And I anticipate around 1,300 voters tomorrow. So, just so you know, in comparison, in 2018, the governor's election, we had an 86.6% turnout, and in 2016, we had an 84% turnout.
Delafield votes.
And presidential elections.
They kind of show up. Pretty good.
Oh, great, thank you. 11C, treasures report, just refer you to the packet. And then D, council request for future agenda items. Any future agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 12. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:56.